We good? Well, while we're doing this, I'll introduce myself. I'm Jackie Skelly. I'm the Executive Director for I Task Area Schools Collaborative. I've done a few of these in front of different school boards around the area and I often, we use IASK as an acronym very freely and often forget to define really what that is. So when we talk about I Task Area Schools Collaborative, we're really referencing a formal partnership between seven school districts and Minnesota North College. The seven school districts that partner in this formal agreement are the Grand Rapids Area Schools, including Big Fork, Deer River, Northland Community Schools, and Reamer, Hill City, Floodwood, Nashua, Kewatin, and Greenway. And so with the seven school districts and Minnesota North Partnership, we work through a variety of programs that really, we hope to make things more efficient and more accessible to students regardless of where they reside. So on here, it just kind of, the first slide is really just showing you a brief summary of what we call the pillars of IASK. And so we have four main pillars, but one of the things that we have started to do a lot more in the last three years is we really kind of spun off in different areas and provided some other services as well. Sometimes they fit really directly under these things and sometimes it's just an opportunity to be more efficient. And so the four pillars that I'll kind of talk through today are next career pathways, technology services, IASK, special education services, and then Darla Rani, the Director of Early Learning, will be presenting on Early Edge, just to give you some more specific updates on that program. If at any point you ever want to look at how things are going, what's being highlighted in IASK, we have a website there. And within that website, you can access any four of the pillars, as well as other information around the IASK Board of Directors, too. So the first one, our next career pathways, some of you, I'm hoping, have heard of this. I know you had a recent award night and a lot of students received awards in these areas, certificates for completion. Scott Petro is our Director of that program. And really, the focus of this program is to provide a way for students to kind of create a path from middle school through high school and graduation. What we really would like is for them to practice opportunities and specific careers that they may be interested in going into, but at the same time, we also want to give the opportunities to work on different skills and have opportunities to see things. And maybe they don't want to go that route. So they don't spend a four-year, you know, four years of college before they figure out this maybe isn't what I want to do. We have done several different things, specifically in the last year or two by adding a CNA course. We've had a high, high demand for CNA and our healthcare partners have been very closely cheering us on. And so we're kind of asking them to take a next step here one of these days, looking into next year and the year after. But also, we've increased opportunities for like early childhood educator pathways. And so we've expanded our education pathway from just elementary education licensure to early education, too. Again, there is a separate link for that, but you can access Career Pathways website from the main website as well. One of the things to know, if it's something specifically you want to know how, what 318 or Grand Rapids Area Schools is doing in Career Pathways, if you go to that website and look under Explore Pathways at the top of the page, and then just select Grand Rapids, you can see all the different areas and the pathways that are, that are happening, what kids need to do or take in order to have certain opportunities and certain pathways. It's a really good place. We direct families there. We direct students there. And there's, there's a lot of really good information there. There's some, you know, curriculum guides that really explain if you're an eighth grader and you want to go into healthcare, here's kind of your first step in ninth grade of a class to take in 10th grade. There's options. It's not tracking by any means, but it's definitely giving them options in some direction to help prepare them if they want to get to that last step at the end of their high school years to go into internship. At the end of each slide, I do have two specifically this year, the districts that are participating in this. So one of the nice parts about IASK is that we have services and supports available, but districts have the option of whether they want to purchase into those services or not. So not all districts purchase into all services. Career Pathways is one where all seven districts have said yes, we want in on that. And so this year, all seven of our school districts are participating in that. And then the, the main way that Career Pathways is funded is we do have school district contribution. One of the big things, this used to be a primarily grant-funded program. And what we have found, sadly, in many, many programs has been when you just have a only grant-funded program, what typically happens is there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of skin in the game. And so people just kind of go, oh yeah, I'll be in on that until you have to do something and then everyone's out. And a whole program where a lot of work was put in kind of dwindles off. When we really look to, to make this a more sustainable model, we're always looking at three partnerships. And one is school district contribution. Again, it's going to be less than if you're running this program yourself. Grants and donations, we continually are going out and seeking grants. We have a grant writer that we have a partnership with, and we have had some donations from some business partners as well. And then business partnerships. And we do have some opportunities with business partnerships for them to see a benefit in getting workforce by partnering with us financially and getting access to students during the day. It's definitely something that's, it's, it's a, it's not quite as easy as it seems, just because a lot of times when people pay money for something, they think then they have a say in that, which makes sense. But when it's a school program, we have to follow some school procedures and policies. And so it becomes a little more difficult than just, hey, if you do this, then we can do that type of thing. And again, the website's on the bottom. Technology Services is our second pillar. The Director, Chris Larson, has been working with us for the last two, three years. He, this position was a full-time position for many, many years. Mark Curtis had it for many years. And when he retired, one of the ways we talked about saving some, it was, part of it was a financial savings and part of it was just, again, being efficient with our resources, was reducing it from full-time to 0.5 position. And so when that reduction happened, the position is currently a 318-held position that they sell to IASK to provide the services in the three areas. So we, really, the, the three big areas that we have, Technology Services and IASK for are wireless security for all our districts. They share wireless technology, E-Rate work to assist with bringing in additional revenue, and then again, providing maintenance or setup for current IASK technology when needed. There is a link to that page as well. That's one's still kind of under construction, but it does offer some tips for safety and security that we're hoping to make sure that are available to all people. We have, we work with Chris a lot this fall around cybersecurity training. And one of the things we continue to work on is planning, how do we roll out five years from now? So we can do some planning around updates and replacement of parts and systems so that people can not only know this is going to happen, but then if there's a financial impact to that, that we can plan from that, for that, from a budget perspective. And again, the program is funded through school district contribution. So we do bill out some of the services, telecom equity aid and E-Rate revenue all goes into helping pay for that. This is a change from years past. We used to bill out 100% of this. So districts paid 100% of tech services. IASK Partners, we actually started in July 1. IASK Partners with 318 Business and HR Services. And so in working with Cara, just kind of talking through what makes the most sense, not only for individual districts, but for IASK as a whole, this seems like a much better way to utilize the revenue that we have coming in. So we'll, we'll have students, districts will benefit from that telecom equity aid and E-Rate revenue as well. The only district that does not participate in Technology Services this year is Hill City. As of July 1, they pulled out of that service and they run that on their own. And then the third pillar that I'll talk through, and this is a, this, I mean, this could be a presentation in and of itself, so I won't go into that. You guys have Anna Lloyd as your Director. I'm the Director of the other six districts. Anna and I worked very closely together. When Anna started, we tried really hard to make it so that it wasn't, well, if I work in 318, this is what we do. But if I work in the co-op, this is what we do. And we've tried really hard to streamline our expectations, our procedures, our processes for all things related to service, how we work with families, how we hold some of our required meetings, like our Special Ed Advisory Council meetings. And then we've also, we've also partnered on some pretty intentional opportunities that weren't there before. And that only works when you have people who are willing to partner. And so you have a gem of Anna in a Director. She, we partner on PAYS Lab, which is a Practical Assessment Exploration System. I always say at any point, if somebody wants to observe that program, it's, it's a wonderful program. It's for our students who have more cognitive disabilities and they, they, they're in high school, ninth through 12th grade, and they work on job skills in a lab-type setting. So the whole thing is of assessment. And they walk in, they punch in, they punch out as if they're on the job, they connect with people as if they're supervisors. I mean, they call you supervisor, and they do a task, they get scored on a task. And if they don't master the task, they redo the task. I mean, that's an assessment. But the kids love it and they are, it's not only telling us what the kids have and what they know, it's also telling us where we might have some gaps in our programming. So we've been able to then go back to our middle school staff and say, here are some gaps we're seeing clearly amongst all of our students. And that's a partnership with all seven districts. So Grand Rapids and co-op staff, or students, I'm sorry, access that program. We also have this Friday Prom with Purpose, which I know some of you have heard about or seen or donated to. That is a, that's a, that actually came from one of the high school seniors in Grand Rapids who contacted me last year and said, can we make a sensory friendly prom for students with disabilities who struggle to participate in their own prom? And I, you know, as a special ed director, you just think laws and lawsuits, and that's what you think about. And so it was really hard to just say yes right away without going, let me look at all the risks. And we just, we're like, no, we're going to do this. And so between Anna and I, we, we worked on the logistics of the legal aspect of things and made sure that the students had the support they needed to just plan and run and support the students. And this year, we're running our second annual Prom with Purpose. And the co-house donated their facility to that. So we'll be running that Friday. It's one of the days where it just is a good day. When you get done with the day and it just, you remember every reason why you went into education. So it's a very, very good day. We also, with 318, we partner on trainings, many, many trainings. We partner on staffing. I mean, we do a lot of, I know you can hear about it in other places, but there's times where Anna or the coordinators that work with Anna, or me, or the coordinators that work with me, we are just are struggling with the situation and we just need to talk about it outside of people who know the situation. And so we have had some really good staffing conversations, too, which is, as a special ed director, I mean, you can ask anyone across the state, it becomes a pretty isolated position because of the information that you need to process through and not a lot of people want to talk about it. It's really nice to have a partner in that. And so I would say that that has been one of the, the best things in the last five years or six years with Anna, that we have been able to really beef up our partnership. And so with the special ed co-op specifically, the six districts listed on the bottom are the, are the staff who are part of the co-op. But like I said, Anna supports 318 and we work very closely together. So this is just organizational chart, kind of shows what our co-op looks like. Kind of on the top is me and Kristen Pentition, my coordinator. And then we have our administrative assistant, some of our data managers and our MA billing team. And then the bottom part is really the people who do more to support the staff, that consultative piece that I was showing you, as well as some of the direct service for students, so our OTs, our PTs. We do have some of the co-op staff, also shared staff. So some of the staff that are 318 staff are sold to IASK to do some consultative work, DHH, which is Deaf, Hard, or Hearing, PI, which is physically impaired. We have some of those staff working with us, ASD, I believe Tracy Hutchinson. So we have some of your staff as well in that realm that we share as well. Questions at all before we switch to the last program? And we can wait till she's done, too, and we can answer all at once. Okay.
Hi, like Jackie said, I'm Darla Rani. I'm the Director of Early Learning for IASK. So I oversee early childhood programming in the four Attasca-Coney School Districts, so Deer River, Grand Rapids, Greenway, and Nashua-Kewatin. And I'm just going to go over just a little bit about what our programming looks like this year and then kind of where we're headed with some funding changes. So currently this year, we operate 18 preschool classrooms across the four school districts. Seven of those classrooms are in Grand Rapids District. So we have one up at Big Fork. We have three at West. We have two that we operate in partnership out at Minnesota North. And then we have one that is leased space at St. Andrews. So that's our makeup of our preschool classrooms right now. We also operate 22 early childhood family education classrooms, so our classes, those are classes that parents participate with their children. So they come in throughout the week at the different sites. 14 of those classes are held in the Grand Rapids School District. And some of those include Growing Together, where there's some parent education time. We do another example is Outdoor Explorers. So the teachers are outside, kind of showing parents and, and with the kids what the other activities and things that they could be doing outside. We do Storytime at the Library, which is a great partnership with the, with the city and with the library. We do a Seniors in Sprouts class, which is at Oak Hills Assisted Living, where we, the families come actually to that facility. And they do Storytime and activities with the residents at that facility. So that's been a new one we just added this past year and it's been really well-received. And we've really grown in the attendance of the families and the kids that, that go to that site. And there's a lot of memory care patients there. And they, they said, a lot of the staff will say that they, staff look forward to it. And of the things that they struggle to remember, for some reason, that's something that they really connect with, and they look forward to those kids and families coming in. So we currently serve 303 students in our preschool classrooms, and 106 of those students are in the Grand Rapids and Big Fork classrooms. We have 72 Early Edge staff that is classroom staff and also support staff that go into kind of the managing and running of all those classrooms at all of the, the four district sites. I thought I'd go over a little bit of funding sources because early childhood funding for preschool and for early childhood family education is different than a K-12 funding. So these are all the different funding streams that come in in order for us to fund the preschool programming. And I'll just start at the top. At school readiness, this is state funding that comes in for three- and four-year-old preschool programming. It's just a set amount that each district gets, and it's based on the Zero Five Census. So each district is, is different depending on the size of the district. Voluntary pre-K, this is state funding that's allocated to four-year-olds. Grand Rapids, Big Fork has had it for several years. Grand Rapids just got it for the first time this last year. So we currently have 58 seats that are allocated in Grand Rapids and, and 15 that are allocated up in Big Fork. So there's just a set amount that, funding that comes in for those BPK seats. Early childhood family education funding, that's also a set amount that comes in in order for us to do that ECFE programming. That also is based off the Zero to Five Census. So it's a set amount that comes in and then we just, we determine programming based on that amount that comes in. Early learning scholarship, this is money that comes in, but it's actually attached to students. So students have to meet certain eligibility requirements in order to access that funding. So it's not something that the district or our program can, can count on. It really is depending on the kids that are enrolled and whether they meet the criteria and are awarded that scholarship by the state. Early childhood special education funding, this is money, regular education funding that's generated by special education students being enrolled in our classrooms. So this is different than special education funding. This is actually general ed revenue that's being generated by them being in our classroom all day. This is money that's currently not being allocated to the program, but is something that we're looking at doing for next year. We also have tuition, that fees that we collect from parents, depending on their ability to pay. We, this, the tuition that is charged doesn't come close to paying, you know, covering the cost of the programming. But we, in order to keep it affordable for families, we do collect some tuition. The Blandon Foundation Grant, we're in our final year of the 20-year grant, which was the Invest Early Project. So we're in, we're just wrapping up that year, and that's been a significant amount of our funding for the last 20 years. So all of the changes that we've been doing over the last three years have been an adjustment because of that change in funding. And then we also just have some miscellaneous, we sell some services to other districts, the other IASK districts. We support some of their behind-the-scenes scholarship allocation and just the funding piece to some of the other districts. And then we also, you know, are constantly looking for other grants and other ways to support the programming as well. So this is kind, this is the graph of the makeup of our current funding as it, as it sits right now. So you can see that the Blandon Foundation Grant is about half of our operating budget right now. So we've been, over the last two and a half years, that's our primary focus been on how are we going to adjust, either, you know, bring in generating more revenue and adjust our programming in order to, to be able to operate within the money that we have. And so as of last week, the programming that we're planning on has changed significantly. So right now, we're looking at operating nine preschool classrooms across three districts. So Greenway has opted to, to look at running their own early childhood programming for next year. So we'll be in Deer River, Grand Rapids, and the Nashua-Kewatin School District still. So we'll still have five preschool classrooms in Grand Rapids and Big Fork. We'll continue to operate the 22 family education classes that we operate. Again, 14 of those will stay in the Grand Rapids District. And then we'll reduce from that 303 to 180 preschool students served. We will be, our plan is to still have 100 students that are served in between the Grand Rapids and Big Fork schools. So we, some of that, we, we are making up a little bit of that reduction by increasing some of the class sizes in our classrooms across all three of the districts as well. So although we're reducing more classrooms, we are bumping up the number of kids in some of those classrooms in order to still be able to serve. All right, that's all I have. Do you have any questions for Jackie or I?
Darla, do, do we have research on the impact that Invest Early, the 20-year grant had? Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Yeah, there, I mean, the, I think the last Wilder Report is, is probably 2016, maybe, Matt? I don't know. So they, Blandon had, I mean, I think we had done enough of the research and, and they had, the reports were saying the same thing, that yes, that, you know, it did pay to Invest Early. And so we, they didn't, we weren't having them any, do any long-term longitudinal studies after that.
Mr. Chair.
David. Darla, you indicated that half the funding currently comes from the Blandon Foundation and that you've talked about how to replace that. You weren't any more direct than that.
Oh, so I mean, we're doing a lot of things. We've, we've cut infant toddler programming, which was, you know, had been run. We, we've reduced the after-school, before-school summer. We were looking at reducing the number of classrooms. You know, the majority of the budget is staff costs. Also looking at a change in the staffing, the amount of staff that are in each of the classrooms, so making some adjustments to that as well.
Okay. Tough changes.
Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions for you. First off, thank you for that information. I think we all continue to learn and it's great to see what you guys are doing in our community. One question I had was of two. We, for voluntary pre-K, you said you have 58 kids in Grand Rapids and 15 in Big Fork, or seats?
Seats, yep.
What, if the demand is greater, how do you choose?
So, so I mean, when applications come in, there's a lot of different criteria we look at. We have like eligibility flowchart that we follow. I mean, we start with a, you know, district kids first, and then we, we rank them by risk factors. And then, and then some of it is just the timing of when the applications come in as well. So, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And the second question was, any insight into why Greenway opted out of the program?
I think the funding changes was the big one. I mean, without the Blandon, Blandon Grant coming, you know, with our revenue looking different and just looking at streamlining things is, I don't know, Jackie, if you.
I mean, I just, I guess I would just say, one of the things that wasn't necessarily highlighted when it listed all those funding streams was that you enroll a student, you don't know what funding stream goes to them. So it's, it's a roll of the dice. I mean, really like, can you break even type of thing? And so that's where we've had to, we have a lot of expertise where we can have some pretty good, we have a pretty good idea when we roll kids, like where we're going to fit in terms of that break even. And we've worked pretty closely with Cara on this whole process. And I think that's just part of it, is there's a lot of fear. And so it's, I'm not saying they were fearful. I just think there's just a lot of unknowns. And until, I mean, you're trying to kind of make sure your district's on the up and up. You just are like, you just got to take care of it. So I'm only assuming that's kind of what the decision is.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Dave? Darla, would you say that all of the available seats that we have in this program are filled? And if we had more funding, could we fill more?
So, I mean, this year in Big Fork, we ended up having to give back. I don't care if, was it five seats we had to give back? In, in Grand Rapids, we, we, I think we ended up not filling two and a half or three of the seats. So although they're, I mean, they're funding seats, we actually serve more kids than those that meet other, that fit other funding streams. So we serve more than the 58 in, in Grand Rapids because some of them are early childhood special ed, or some are, just don't qualify for the BPK seat, or, you know, so there's a lot of different pieces that kind of go into, it's not a straightforward, we only serve that many kids. So, so if there were additional funding, I think we would always look at serving as many as we can within the funding that's available.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to adjourn the workshop. We'll come back in the session at 6:30 for the regular board meeting.
Did you want to talk about the meeting that we had with Fran?
Did you want to talk about the meeting that we had with Fran?
To come over the table.
Take you right out.
Did everybody catch that?
Oh, yeah.
Are you gonna kind of get Julie assigned chicken bowl?
Careful, she might throw it at you.
Call the board meeting in order, please stand for. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move David.
Move to David. Jacken?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hear none. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is approved. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve the international field trip request to Costa Rica, June twenty-twenty-seven. And Rachel Pierce is attending via Google meets. Go ahead, Rachel.
Hola amigos. Um, I am Rachel Pierce. I'm one of the Spanish teachers at the high school. And yes, I am proposing a trip for high school students that are, are attending a Spanish class or in a Spanish class to go in June of twenty-twenty-seven, um, anywhere from a nine to ten day trip. It would be discussion with parents, guardians and students, what they would prefer. Um, uh, my opinion, what better way to learn a language other than going and, um, experiencing the culture and being in another country and actually utilizing that language with native speakers? And I know Julie has a, a quick video that I sent her, um, in regards to the trip that I am proposing.
Here at Manuel Antonio National Park in Costa Rica, we're hanging out at the beach right now. Like, it's paradise. It's awesome.
The water's warm, the sand is like velvet.
It's all secluded. There's a bunch of forest over here. You can see some sloths. There's a lot of cool scenery.
This day's been really amazing. We started off zip lining, the best thing I've ever done in my life, the best experience.
So pumped.
They're just beautiful. You get to see like everything from so high up.
So much fun. Oh, my God.
We just reflected trees for the environment.
It's beautiful here. This land whitewater rafting, it's intense, it's so much fun.
We just got back from kayaking and the water was beautiful. The sun was nice.
They showed us some of their traditional dancing.
The culture is definitely what makes Costa Rica.
Everything is so rich here, the food, the people, the language. I love it here.
There's a completely awesome volcano right there.
It's the best thing I've ever done in my entire life. It's so fun.
Pira vida!
You can definitely learn more about yourself and the people around you by visiting other countries.
It's a good way to become more independent in a place where you're not normally that comfortable. I would recommend it to anybody who's looking for adventure and looking for fun.
Thank you, Julie. As you can tell, it's, it looks like an amazing time. I lived there when I was in college, traveled to some of the same destinations, um, that, that we'd be traveling to. Um, I am requesting a private tour, um, just for sake of being the only group, um, on the bus and going to certain destinations. Um, I just don't really want to have to deal with other schools, um, things like that. But, um, otherwise, um, I think that this would be a fantastic trip for, for my students and, um, I'm hoping for approval.
Pira vida.
Yes.
Motion to approve?
All right, so moved.
Moved by?
So moved.
And it moved by Ashley to go on the trip to second, second David. Discussion or questions of Rachel?
Uh, Rachel, just one quick question. Uh, I see the, um, estimated cost was about forty-seven hundred dollars or give or take, right?
Give or take, yes.
Okay. And then how many adult chaperones would be going?
So every six, um, paying customers, uh, students, we'd get one chap, one paid chaperone.
Okay. And tho, and those chaperones are all district employees?
Um, I, yes and no. I, I would imagine, yes. I have two teachers who have, who volunteered to go.
Okay, okay.
And they're, they're, they're teachers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Discussion?
Thank you for putting this together.
Absolutely. This is amazing.
Uh, Senora Pierce, I do have a question. I apologize. Is this, uh, something, because I do see that this is for twenty-twenty-seven, is this something that, um, current eighth grade students would be able to sign up considering that they would then possibly be in your class as, you know, ninth and tenth graders then?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, any student enrolled in Spanish, yes. Very good question, though.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, nada.
Mr. Chair, I would like to just offer this, the, the trip is, uh, at the, in the same summer as a trip that you previously approved. Um, but, um, there was discussion at the high school among the group, uh, the leaders of that trip, uh, and Senora Pierce, um, in conjunction with Mr. Hofstadter and, and, um, so they've worked that out. There's not a conflict there necessarily. Kids will have to choose, but, um, there's not necessarily a conflict. They've worked that out. Is that accurate?
That is correct, yes.
And any other discussion?
I, I guess, you know, we, we had asked a number of questions regarding insurance and, and all those types of things associated with that. I'm assuming we're kind of following the same protocols on this, you, you know. Granted, that was kind of my learning experience there also in that, but, um, where the funding really comes from the students or through programs, they might have, they might have ways to
Sure.
fundraise, excuse me. Yeah, thanks for the help. I was but it is not coming through the district per se. It's really coming through programs that you're establishing for it or the student services.
Right.
And it looked like this was an EF Tours, uh, uh, same company that our school uses for other trips too, so that's consistent.
Yes, correct.
And so we obviously had went through the classification of the country in regards to safety and things like that. It'll follow those same protocols if it, for some reason, it escalates, we'll, we'll be revisiting that.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, and I just need to clarify, because.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate those great questions.
Any other discussion?
I'm just real quick, um, piggybacking off of what Tom just said, EF Tours does reach out to you if there is some sort of escalation concern. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, they're fantastic. They, um, we, we took a trip last April to Panama through EF Tours and I just felt so safe. That is my number one priority, obviously the students and their safety. Um, and I never felt unsafe at all. I would never, ever take, uh, being a mom, I would never take students if I felt unsafe in any, anyway.
So, so we're anticipating, I, I mean, this pricing is kind of based at around thirty students, is that correct?
Um, give or take, yeah. I, I prefer a little smaller, but yes, give or take.
Okay, um, so I, I guess, just, are we going to have any problem with the two trips simultaneous and kind of meeting those numbers or do we have any concerns about that? And how does that affect pricing, I guess, or is that any concern, I guess?
I, I mean, for myself, no, um, I kind of like the, the twenty amount, like twenty students or twenty travelers in general. Um, so I guess, you know, if I took a group of six students, then, you know, I'm taking a group of six students, but, um, I, I guess, no, I, I don't have any concerns, but maybe some of the school board members do.
Does the price stay the same, uh, Rachel? If the, for instance, if you only had six students or if you had twenty students, it, does the price stay, uh, the same at that forty-seven hundred dollar mark, give or take, or does it?
Yeah.
Would it be more expensive? What, what does that look like?
So, um, the student cost, what I have written down is like thirty-seven hundred, basically. Um, but the price would go up because I requested a, um, a private tour. Just, there's so many reasons, safety, et cetera. Um, I have traveled with other groups from other states and it was not really enjoyable. Um, so that price would go up to forty-three hundred. So that would be the only price increase, even if I had a smaller group or a larger group, it, the only reason for the price increase is just because that private tour. But otherwise, if I went with six students or, you know, um, eighteen, it, it really doesn't matter.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
With a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Trip's approved.
Bye, gracias.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Adios.
Next item on the agenda, principals report. Darren Hofstadt, Grand Rapids High School.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Gross, thank you for inviting me tonight. Um, as I drove up here from the high school, uh, there's a lot of goings on. Um, right now, there's a track meet in session, I think a baseball game, some lacrosse practice, tennis matches, you name it. It's just, uh, it's a busy time of year for sure and, uh, you know, we've had awards night, um, recently, prom coming up, MCA testing started today, IB testing starts next week, getting ready for graduation. Um, and at the same time, though, is, you know, if you have an opportunity, um, to attend any of these events, um, or even some of our band concerts, choir concerts that are coming up, we recently had the musical as well, that's another plug, but, um, it's just amazing at watching our students do what they do best. And at this age level too, for those of you that have younger kids, um, to see how far that they can go and how far they've come, um, here at Grand Rapids. So, very proud of the students this year and, and look forward to rounding out a, a great, great twenty-five school year. Um, tonight, I wanted to talk about our CTE, our Career and Technical Education at the Grand Rapids High School. Um, I think it's come up quite a bit recently and I don't think it's always really well-known in terms of what it is, what it entails, and, um, some of the things that we are able to offer, um, because of programming and because of our highly qualified staff. So first off, um, you know, you hear this misnomer once in a while from the community that, you know, why don't the, the schools teach, you know, some fundamental skills that are going to translate to the workforce? Um, we do that. Um, we do that. Uh, we, we have a lot of classes and courses that are not only preparing students for that, uh, post-secondary education, but also for, um, a career or a certification program as well. So CTE, um, really prepares students by emphasizing real-worlds, world skills and practical knowledge. Um, really aims to provide students with a pathway to post-secondary education by teaching transferable workplace skills, um, and those applied concepts. There's, um, programs that are aligned with national definitions and regional workforce needs, uh, ensuring students are equipped with skills and demand in the local area. So our students, um, you know, the CTA programs that we have at the Grand Rapids High School help students explore those high-demand careers, um, gain the technology and skills needed for success in adult life and also prepares them for post-secondary education. So our program, um, integration benefits, so this is really out of the, um, Every Student Succeeds Act, um, the Strengthening Career and Technical Education Act, um, Perkins V, I don't know, I always want to say Perkins Five because it's just the math teacher coming out in me, but, um, really looks at emphasizing academic achievement um, and focuses on those in, industry credentials. Um, like you heard from Jackie earlier in terms of the career pathways, next, CTE is connected, um, in regards to, um, the program, program development. But our CTE programs and staff have to take it a step further with regards to, um, their license and program approval through the state. So we work with the True North Consortium here, uh, in Grand Rapids and Jane Shade, um, is, is a contact that, or the director, um, that is extremely helpful, um, with regards to, um, programming, planning, um, training opportunities um, for our, for our staff to be able to bring this back to our students. Obviously, the student benefits are everything, um, that real-world knowledge, um, exploring careers. Um, there's, there's, you know, the entry-level programs from Small Engines or Exploring the World of Business to our Capstone, um, classes that include, uh, internships across, um, the different, um, CTE programs. So Perkins is obviously a big part of this and this has been around for, for quite some time. Um, but this act really focuses on our, our academic achievement as well. Um, some of the statistics at the state level, um, is, is obviously encouraging, but we know that even here at Grand Rapids where our numbers are even higher than some of these, these state averages, but ninety-two percent, um, graduate for CTE concentrators, which means they've taken, um, two or more courses, um, CTE courses. Sixty-five percent enroll in post-secondary education of some type, whether that's to complete a certification or to go on to a two- or four-year, um, school. Eighty-six percent employment placement rate, um, after that post-secondary CTE completion. So really more than just, you know, preparing our kids for college, um, this, this career-oriented, um, programs really, um, meet the needs of what our, our region is asking for, um, focusing on high-skill, high-wage careers. And that's, you know, we have a lot of students that are motivated, they're, they're, you know, in families as well, more nervous about the cost of, of two- and four-year colleges and looking for another option. Um, this is something where we can explore this in a high school setting while being able to offer a lot of variety, um, and experiences. So the overview of our, our program, um, itself, and, and we're really close, closer to fifty approved CTE courses. And what it means to be approved is, um, a program approval is necessary and the program approval goes through that True North Consortium. Um, it includes, um, uh, sequential courses along with, um, syllabi um, that demonstrate that you have the proficiencies in the courses, um, necessary to be able to meet that threshold of what it means to be a career and technical education program. The second component is having, um, certified staff. This doesn't just happen by accident. Certainly some students or some teachers coming out of college, um, have the, that opportunity, um, to be certified, whether it's an ag teacher or an industrial arts or business. Um, but in many cases, at the Grand Rapids High School in particular, um, our, our um, our, our staff have gone above and beyond to acquire these certifications. Um, and, and again, coming in, um, as a principal five years ago, obviously, I didn't realize, um, how much work, uh, some of our staff went through to earn those certifications, but even now, um, looking to, um, go above and beyond into increase their certifications, uh, depending on courses that we teach and programs that we run. So our program areas, again, it follows very closely with, uh, career pathways, um, include, you know, the, the seven or the eight that you see, the seven that you see up there, and then there's, um, there's even a component of, with our special education program, um, our ACTE, which is, uh, Accessibility, um, Career and Technical Education. Um, and for those of you that, um, know what I'm talking about with, um, our Quest program, our Quest program serves, um, eleven students, um, our special education students in terms of current connecting them, uh, to careers outside of just the high school day, taught by a certified CTE instructor. Um, so it's, it's, it's a pretty special thing we have here at Grand Rapids. We have over nine certified instructors. Um, and even though, you know, our financial re, you know, restrictions that we've been dealt with the last couple of years have suppressed the growth, we've really been creative in, in our offerings to students by having staff that are not only interested in bringing their expertise into, um, our course catalog, um, but also to go above and beyond and get CTE certified. And there's, there's definitely more meat on the bone. I think there's an opportunity for, for more programming, uh, especially when it comes to, um, healthcare or hospitality. Um, but again, those are things that we look towards the future on, um, once we get, uh, an opportunity to, to experience growth, which we, we so much need in this district, for sure. Um, and again, some of our programs, you know, when you look at the broad aspect of it, um, these are things that we offer, but if you kind of get down to the minutia of what some of these courses might look like, like a Minnesota Foods, um, or a, you know, a, um, natural resources course, um, small, large wildlife game management with our business and marketing, it includes our business courses, but also, um, some computer, um, programming courses. Um, with health careers, this is an opportunity that's, um, we hope for growth. This is, this is a kind of a unicorn type of a license for, um, an educator to have that health career. So we're exploring some options with, uh, one of our science teachers going into this next school year. Um, transportation, obviously, auto body, um, auto mechanics, um, small engines. Um, with our construction, obviously, we have our, um, our courses that include, um, you know, manufacturing, um, metal works, um, electrician, our computer science and manufacturing are there as well. Now, these, these program approvals and the instructor approvals, um, once you get them, you don't just keep them. These are things that, they, they undergo a five-year review, um, in terms of the program re, uh, approval, and we also, when we have a retirement, um, as we did a couple of years ago, we lost, um, the manufacturing approval with, uh, the retirement of, uh, Mr. Tim Larson. Um, but those are things that we, you know, quickly get back with, um, our, the, the remaining staff, but um, it is something that we have to be very mindful of and something that, as we look forward, um, we continue to, you know, make sure that we are capitalizing on the funding. So the funding portion of CTE is, is one of the things that I think as a board, um, is certainly attractive, um, but also as a, a building leader, looking at the support that, um, the, the, the act gives to schools, um, includes a, a thirty-five percent, um, levy reimbursable, um, expenditures and salary, um, for our instructors and our programs. Um, so this is available to districts with approved programs, and, and we certainly have done, um, the lion's share of program approvals in the True North Consortium. This is something that we still have room for growth. Um, I really believe that. We have, um, you know, our, our, it, it doesn't happen by accident. This happens because you have very highly motivated staff, um, professional staff that continue to seek out opportunities. Um, this is not something that I have to beg our teachers to, to, to do. It's something that a lot of times the staff brings to me. Um, again, the additional support that we have here, um, that ACTE funding for students with disabilities, um, our work-based learning opportunities have increased, um, in the last couple of years with our business and our manufacturing pathways. Um, our, our industry-recognized certificates, you might have heard a little bit about the, the CNA program that was, was, is a very popular, um, course that we offered this year and plan on offering it again next year. Um, but these types of things, our local industries are, are asking for, and our students are too. Um, one thing I want to mention too, the, the ICC Foundation is, has sponsored a thousand-dollar reward to students that complete a pathway. Um, and they have a minimum of two-point-oh GPA. Um, of course, you got to enroll at the Minnesota North I task at campus, but we had sixty-four students, um, receive, uh, their PIN, um, at a recent awards banquet, meaning they completed a pathway. So sixty-four, um, that are eligible to receive that a thousand-dollar scholarship at Minnesota North. So, um, obviously, we feel like there is support at the state level, um, and we want to continue to, um, explore opportunities for our students. We've got a good foundation, um, but we're always looking to the future in terms of how can we expand, whether it is our career pathways, our CTE offerings, or even our, um, program and instructor approval. So hopefully, um, again, tonight was a little bit educational with regards to our CTE. Um, you know, there's, there's certainly a lot more to this. Um, you know, our staff are really always open and welcome if you ever have any questions with regards to a specific, um, pathway or CTE, um, program. Uh, don't hesitate to reach out. Um, any questions?
Um, one big question, Mr. Chair. Um, the, you said something about the state. Um, is it state-funded? I see there was a, uh, levy of thirty-five percent. And along that line with, um, Mr. Superintendent, any concerns with this year's, uh, state budget? Is any of this funding at risk, that you know?
None of the reimbursement, uh, is at risk, the, at least that I'm aware of. I think Mr. Hofstadt mentioned support at the state level and a number of bills that have been advanced to try to increase that reimbursement, which would be great for us, but, you know, there's no money to do that right now, so we're kind of, it's just another one of those things on the list of good ideas, just not the right time. Um, I don't know if Kara wants to answer that levy question.
Nothing at risk that you're concerned about? And is this one that you spend in, you get let forward after the fact?
This one actually, um, I have to put a budget in before.
Oh.
This is one of the only ones that, um, they pay you, and then we shore it up at your end.
Ah, okay, great.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put together, uh, a budget proposal in the spring here.
Okay, great, thanks.
My turn.
Um, you mentioned, uh, True North Consortium.
Mm-hmm.
Wh- what exactly is that as an entity, I guess? I'm, I didn't get a good feel for, uh, obviously, everything's kind of funneled through them. It sounded like you had to kind of get approved through them. Is that correct? Or did I misunderstand that? Or they have to be involved in, uh?
Less about approval through them, other, but more about support in terms of how to, um, navigate Perkins and some of the licensing as well. Um, maybe Mr. Gross can speak a little bit more to the consortium. This is the history coming up. So it used to be that consortiums were formed locally with a little bit more, um, uh, local, uh, decision-making around that or organizations. So for a long time, I ask had been our Perkins or, our Perkins Consortium in relationship with ICC. Um, and you had, like, Chisholm and Hibbing maybe working together with Hibbing Community College, and so it was really pieced and parceled out. Uh, a number of years ago, they came in, they, there was a state reorganization saying, you need to consolidate, and you can have, you know, three, but you can't have twelve of these consortiums up there. So it sort of turned into a east consortium, a central consortium, and a western consortium. Ours didn't change really much. Um, it was still pretty mu, it's still I ask, because it, you know, seven districts over here. Um, but especially on the central and east where they hadn't all glommed together as much. So the idea behind that was, you know, obviously consolidating, uh, and making the process more efficient and lean, so there's fewer, uh, fewer layers, I guess you could say, uh, fewer, you know, every consortium had some sort of administrative component of it to monitor the grants, do the applications, interface with state. Now, that's all, uh, condensed. So ours just happens to be called True North.
Okay, so, so is it really kind of basically I ask, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, uh, uh, these are obviously electives for students, right, that they can choose to kind of go this route when they're in, maybe like as a sophomore, junior, senior?
Yes, mainly.
How low does it go, I guess?
All, all the way down to, yeah, ninth grade.
Ninth grade.
It does, CTE does not extend to the middle school.
Okay.
Um, but it does, um, you know, starting at ninth grade. And, you know, some of our courses that we teach are, they could be CTE courses, and those are things that we are looking to, you know, make sure that we can capitalize on as well, to make sure that we, you know, can, can use the, the thirty-five percent.
Yeah.
Levy, and those are, those are opportunities, again, that we, we want to make sure that I, we capitalize on.
Um, how are we able to offer any of these services in Big Fork right now, or electives? And, okay.
Yep. It's, uh, it's, it's scaled down just because of personnel and numbers, but Stu Ostendorf up there does a really good job.
Is that what he was getting, uh, uh, some approvals he was getting, or certification?
That's exactly it. Yep, yep. Yep, so he offers, he, he offers kind of as a one-man show up there, a lot of the same courses, but getting that certification in place.
So it's gonna be more skewed a little bit up there, probably towards manufacturing and, and, and the construction?
Yeah.
I forget the seven groups you had, or six groups you had up there, but?
Yes, yeah, there's no ag up with it, you know, there's not an ag teacher, there's not a business teacher. It's more, more towards construction, manufacturing, yeah.
Do we have any opportunity with, uh, with, uh, so, so how involved do the local, like man, obviously, the Quest program had some local manufacturers involved and, and maybe the local
labor. I, I think what you're getting at too, Tom, and, and I'm glad you brought this up, because our, our staff have done an excellent job in terms of reaching out to our contacts here in the community. I know one of our teachers has over two hundred, um, businesses that he works with throughout the year. Um, so that is a really big component in terms of tying in with local industry and companies, and I think, again, we have a staff that's very, um, experienced, so they have created these relationships and partnerships over the years, but that's a big component of our CTE program, so I'm really glad you brought that up.
Okay.
Their advisory committees, uh, as well involved in, in it.
Okay. Well, that, that helps, then.
Good thing.
Thank you.
All right, Darren.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Some moves.
Moved by Dave, second.
David.
Second by David, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, approval of the March twenty-twenty-five claims, in the amount of seven million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Do I have a motion?
Some moves.
Moved by Dave.
Second, David.
Second by David, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? March, excuse me, March twenty-twenty-five claims are approved. Next item on the agenda, approval, the following retirements, Casey.
Good evening, Board. Tonight, I'm recommending approval of one retirement, Kathleen Sumner, ESP. Kathleen has served for twenty-eight years.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ashley, second.
Second with appreciation.
Absolutely.
Second, David. Discussion.
Congratulations and thank you for her service.
Kathleen's an amazing ESP. She will be missed. Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Um, Kathleen's retirement's approved. Congrats. Next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. Uh, all matters listed under the consent agenda are staff-related, considered routine, and do not require discussion. Um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ashley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. There's no discussion on consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda, financial report. Kara.
Good evening. Um, you have a summary of where we are in third quarter, um, in our school this full year. Um, there are some accruals built in there, but some of them are difficult to estimate. So, um, the first one would be property taxes. We've collected forty-four percent, um, of what will be due this year. Um, a lot of those come in at year end, and some property taxes aren't collected, so we have to, um, build, um, contingencies into the, the budget for that. So right now, revenues are seventy percent of, uh, we've collected seventy percent or accrued of what we're expected. We're seventy-five percent through the year, and expenditures were sixty-nine percent spent of what we're expecting to spend. So, um, right now, our bottom line looks better than, um, flat, so that's good. Um, so this is just basically informational for you.
Any questions for Kara?
No, I, oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, uh, thank you for sharing this, um, and it's great to see that we're in a better place than we would anticipate being right now, um, knowing that there's more to come for the rest of the year, but, um, it's encouraging to see where we are now, so thank you for all that.
Yep.
Dave?
Kara, I would second that, uh, deeply appreciated. Any surprises for you in this?
Well, interest, it's a very simple one. You know, I, I budget very conservatively for that, but right now, we're at about a hundred and fifty percent of budget, so, um, just happy.
That's a good thing.
With where we are, with our, yeah, our interest revenue. That's a easy one to grab.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kara. Uh, next item on the agenda, accept second reading and approve policy seven oh four. Superintendent Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you can see in your packet, seven oh four has to do with our, uh, fixed asset inventory and accounting, uh, as referenced in that board report. It aligns with GASB. I've lost track of what number we're on now. Uh, GASB, what are we on? Fifty-something? I don't remember. Um, as many times as they've revised it. Um, uh, it, there was an adjustment to the threshold that was, uh, included in, in, uh, recent changes and recommended by MSBA. This was reviewed by a policy review committee, and, uh, comes with their recommendation. I'd recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to, uh, accept the second reading and approve policy seven oh four?
So moved, David.
Moved by David. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ashley. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Policy seven oh four is approved. Next item on the agenda, rescind policy five thirty-three point two, bicycle and walk to school. Superintendent Gross?
In our, uh, in the process of reviewing our policy manual, we came across five thirty-three point two bicycle and walk to school. Um, we're not really sure about the origin of this, of this policy. Uh, in taking a look at it, the policy review committee, uh, determined that while it has some good information in there, it really communicates a philosophy about kids getting to school, not a policy item for the board to be weighing in on. Uh, we do have other policies that address our obligations. Uh, we do have other policies that address our obligations when it comes to pedestrian and bicycle safety. So this doesn't really fall into that. And um this isn't a policy that MSBA has in its manual. Um, we brought it to the wellness committee too, and even at that level, there wasn't a, a burning kind of intent to keep it there. So this is a policy that as opposed to adding, we're, we're uh recommending to rescind and pull it out of our policy group just because it's not necessarily policy work and um doesn't necessarily belong in that policy manual.
Do I have a motion to rescind policy five thirty three point two?
Some moves.
Moved by Dave. Second.
Second, David.
Second by David. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Policy five thirty three point two rescinded. Next item on the agenda, approve agreement with ISD three nineteen Nashwaukewatt and for assistance with moving schools. Kara.
This will be the first summer where Grand Rapids isn't moving classrooms or schools. So it's kind of exciting for us. But Nashwauk gets to move from two over a hundred year old buildings into one brand new one this summer and has requested our help. We have a lot of experience with that. So we put together uh an agreement with them that allows our director of buildings and grounds and uh maintenance tech to assist with that process. They will not um be over there every day doing this, but this is an assistance um with the moving process. So um the costs are in there, the costs um are wages and benefits and an additional amount because um the buildings and ground instructor will be working more um to make up for stuff he is not doing while he is here. So I'm just asking for approval of this agreement.
Do I have the motion to approve the agreement?
Move to approve.
Move by David. Do I have a second?
Tom?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Um, yeah, Mr. Chair, one quick question. So the amount, um, was this looking for it that we're charging or we would charge? Nashwaukewatt is like thirty nine thousand, something like that. Is that correct? Twenty nine?
Twenty nine, three.
Twenty nine thousand, three hundred. Um, that's just wages um and benefits for those two individuals that will be helping to coordinate.
That, that is for, and and it's mileage also. It's for the Grand Rapids staff, so the director and um Luke Hootman, the maintenance tech.
Okay.
For their travel and wages and benefits.
Okay. And if there's a overage, over and above that, would that, is that?
Um.
That we would.
I, I feel like Nashwauk would honor that.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thanks.
Further discussion?
Um, Tom? I, I did send up your questions before here and and appreciate the quick response. I just would want to note that, that I appreciate the fact that we're kind of recognizing our costs and not just the hourly cost, but the fact that we're potentially taking staff away and trying to, you know, get pro- proper recompense from them on this. Um, I appreciate the time that was taken on that. I also really appreciate the fact that um you looked at the liability insurances for the professional services. You know, the risk we take a little bit, you, you looked into that. Um, you know, if something gets misconstrued in, in the communication that we're not taking any liability on that um action. And I, I appreciate the fact that you looked into that and have something in the contracts for that also. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just, you know, just recognize uh collaboration. Uh, I think it's, it's a good indication of that that um Nashwaukewatt reached out, uh, recognized that, as Kara said, we have quite a bit of experience that we've gained over the last few years. Uh, you know, understanding logistics and what to have where and when um to put together kind of that moving information. And so I uh, I appreciate the opportunity to collaborate um with them again.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Agreement uh with ISD three nineteen is approved.
Thank you, Kara.
Next item on the agenda, uh continued community engagement discussion Superintendent Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week we began a discussion about next steps for our school district as we look ahead, knowing that uh we'll continue to have funding challenges, increasing costs and um budget concerns. And rather than focusing on this from a referendum standpoint, we focus the discussion more on community engagement because we know that um what we're really talking about is increasing, you know, making sure that that deficit stays closed on expenses and and revenues. And uh in the future, we'll either have to be talking about increased revenues or more budget reductions. And so having a good idea where the community at is really important, um whether that has to do with what the community's priorities are as far as programming, as far as class sizes, as far as, you know, our building operations on that side of things, or um if there's an opportunity for revenue at some point, understanding that's been uh challenging as well. So as I presented in my board report, circling back to those questions that I brought forward, um first, is this something that the board wants to lean into essentially and and kind of work strategically or intentionally on a community engagement campaign? That's something we want to take on. Second, if the board thinks this is important, is there an appetite to uh get some assistance with that? We heard a snapshot of what Jeff Daler uh and his organization could potentially do. And and I'm not suggesting that it has to be them, but I know he's been insightful and discussions that we've had subsequent even to our referendum and and leading up to it previously. And he's um done a good job working with some school districts in rural Minnesota. And then third, uh, if there's interest in, in those things, if there are a couple of board members that'd be interested in, in meeting to plan what next steps might be, including following up with Jeff or someone else, if that's what the direction the board would want to look at. So I guess with that, I would sort of defer to the board for some uh, some discussion on that.
Discussion.
I think it would be beneficial to can, to move forward in any sort of engagement with our community and figuring out where they stand. I mean, they, essentially, we are all sitting here um doing work for them and their families. Um, and so it is very important that we hear how, how we do things on this end affects them, affects their children, their students, however that might look. Um, and so it's, I think it would be very important for us to continue moving forward in that regard, making sure that we hear what they have to say. Um, and I'm just gonna skip right down to number three that I would be willing to put time in to figure out how to move forward with that.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah.
Uh, other discussion?
I would, I would agree uh with Ashley. Um, I think we do need to lean, I think that's a great word, is to lean into the community to, to find out what are the community's priorities as it relates to our school district um and what does that mean? Um, and helping them understand that uh the path forward is um murky right now and we need some clarity from the community on either um reducing opportunities for our kids um or um or, or what that is gonna look like because of the status quo, your point here is not going to, to cut it. So fully agree, we should lean into that. I don't know about Daler or not. I think it would be helpful to understand what the cost looks like before we can uh make a decision like that. But I think I'm a big believer in um trusting professionals that do things like this and leaning into them. Uh, if they're consultants that are wise in this area, I think it's, um, I'm certainly not a public relations, community, school financing guru, and I don't think any of us are. Uh, and so I think if the cost is justifiable, I think it's worth exploring that opportunity. Um, and uh at the risk of overburdening myself, I think it's really important and I would also agree to, to, to help with this effort.
Discussion.
Dave.
David.
Um, you, you know, I, I agree wholeheartedly in the community engagement. We need that, right? That's our, that's our job. Um, um, I am very concerned about, um, you know, expending money that doesn't result in something for us, right? And, and so bringing in a third party, you know, I'd, I'd want more definition, just as Dave mentioned before we even consider that and try to really put some guide rails on it and, and know that we're, because obviously anytime we're doing that, it's not going into the classroom, which is where we all want that money to go, right? And, and to be directly to the students. So, so we want to make sure that anytime it's not going there, that we're, we're using it the way we need to use it. Um, um, uh, so that's, that's all.
Um, do you, do you feel like uh maybe that subcommittee could make a recommendation to the board about, about uh services like that?
Yeah, yeah. I think we need to outline how we're gonna use those services, what we're gonna look for, look for some quotes as Dave. You, you know, we gotta have a little, you know, you know, a- and again, I know we're early on. You, you know, you can't come to us with that right now, but, but that is my, that's my concern in the discussion we've had, obviously, right? Um, is, you, you know, we're already talking about financial problems. The last place I want to see any money going is outside of the classroom right now. And I, and I know we all want that, right? But, you know, yeah. So.
Uh, I would agree with uh, uh, Dave's very well made points. Uh, I appreciated the presentation uh from Daler very much. Uh, and we do need to reach out to the community. We do need to listen and understand what direction the community wants and believes. And, and the community needs to understand what the choices are uh as well. Uh, it's uh, uh, there's an education process that has to happen going in both directions. We as a board need to be educated and the community needs to be educated about uh, um, the uh murkiness um, the challenges that we're faced with. And I'd be willing to assist however possible.
Uh, looks like at this point we have three members that would be willing to serve on a subcommittee. Um, and we can only have three, we can't put four, we'd have a quorum. So uh Superintendent Gross, would you be willing to pull the subcommittee together?
Yep.
That discussion?
Yep.
And then bring back some sort of a recommendation to the board?
Sounds great. Do we, does it make sense, Mr. Chair? Does it make sense, Mr. Chair, to set some sort of timeline that we can work towards? Because I think having a goal date in mind will help align our efforts. Mr. Chair, if I can, our, uh, you know, we, um, the, the, we're in this interesting place where uh, you know, sometimes you can go slow to go fast and sometimes you can't afford to go slow. Um, I think coming back with a recommendation, uh, there's, it seems like there's unanimity around the fact that we need to do an engagement. So then it's just more about specking out, what, what does that look like? And do we need help? And if we do, so our first board meeting in May is the fifth. Um, we have a work session on the twelfth. I guess my, my recommendation is that we have an opportunity to discuss this at the twelfth. Is there two meetings in May, July or one? So my suggestion is that uh no later than the nineteenth, there's a recommendation with, from the committee as far as what a plan looks like. Does that seem reasonable?
That, that seems like a good timeline. Any, any further discussion?
I, I guess, do you, do you feel you can do, that's pretty aggressive with everything going on?
Yeah.
You know, and I, and I, and I hear you, I hear you on, we, we need to be fast, but, but I guess, is there any? Do we foresee any real opportunity of having anything, you know, we've talked about timelines of if you were to go to the community on anything, it's not gonna be this year, is it? I, or do we even?
I think that's part of this group's, you know, it's part of their work.
Tom, when you say this year, do you mean like this school year or just this year in general?
Well, I guess when you look at the timeframes, what we're really talking about is you'd be going, do we think there's something that exists to go to the community to look for money, right? I, I mean, that's what we're really.
On the revenue side, yeah.
On the revenue side, right?
Yeah.
Um, I guess, yeah, the flip side of the engagement is how do we cut, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's what we're talking about. Okay. So I guess I was focusing on that, right? Because there is no rush on that because we're, we're already behind on.
Yeah.
To, to do anything.
I think the, just from a, from a product standpoint for the nineteenth, that really is about like what does a preliminary plan look like? As far as, what does a preliminary community engagement plan look like? Not that we'd be knee deep in the work necessarily, but, you know, kind of a, a calendar, for instance, or, you know, if there were to be a situation where um the group thought there was some wisdom in bringing in some help, more information on that along with that plan.
And, and how, what would that look like?
Yes. Yep.
Not even solicit quotes per se, but.
Not necessarily, depending on where we're at, yeah.
What would outside engagement potentially look like? Okay. Okay. No, that's fine. I.
That, that sounds like.
Kind of talking a lot.
No, that's good.
Yeah.
And uh, so.
I feel like I got some call together that first.
Meeting and come back to us on the nineteenth.
Yep.
Great. Uh, next item on the agenda, board reports. Uh, Jaden, we'll start with you. I'm sure there's a lot going on.
Yeah, a lot going on as we like wrap up the last couple of things. Last couple of months in the school year, this Friday is our second annual prom with purpose at the classic community center, which this is like an alternative prom for students that wouldn't normally attend our regular prom due to circumstances, which could be noise, um, sound distractions as like balloon streamers, anything like that. So that'll be this Friday and it'll be for surrounding schools and we'll be able to get all the attendees ready and then continue with prom and serve lunch. Next week, we're going into spring fling and then we'll go right into prom that Saturday, which our theme is Bet on a Night to Remember. Grand March will be at seven at the Rife and then prom is eight thirty to eleven thirty at Timberlake. And then post-prom will follow at the arena from eleven to three. Tickets for prom are twenty five dollars, but it's free if you then want to go to post-prom. So that's the one plus. Um, for spring, spring, spring thing, spring fling themes, Monday we have Hawaiian tourists, Tuesday's frat, Wednesday we're wearing pastel colors, Thursday we'll wear green because May is mental health awareness month and green is the color for mental health. Friday is orange and blackout. Um, as spring fling wraps up, we'll also wrap up our Ronald McDonald House fundraiser, which is our pop tab fundraiser. We're currently at over a hundred thousand pop tabs collected and we have two more rounds of collecting to go. So hopefully these last two rounds, people really rally together and we can end with a total of two hundred thousand. Last Wednesday was our academic excellence awards night for ninth through twelfth graders. Um, ninth through twelfth graders were able to get like department awards. There was the Dartmouth Harvard and Yale Book Awards and the United States Marine Corps had awards for ninth through twelfth graders. For an addition for seniors, there were the IB diploma candidates, medallion candidates and merit candidates, three sport athletes, captain's council, career pathways and triple A winners. And the last thing that was announced was the presidential awards, which this was our yellow cords that students got if they had cumulative GPA of three point five or higher throughout their whole like high school career. So that was a big accomplishment for all the students that were able to get that. Like Hofstadt mentioned, we have IB testing starting in the next couple of weeks and that will last about two weeks. And then in two weeks, May seventh is also our scholarship award night for seniors and that will also be at the Rife.
Thank you. Ashley?
Um, so this, let's see, this past Thursday, um, myself, David Marty, Tom Gustafson and Melissa Barr, uh, we attended a Rams um event. Rams organized um uh, a meeting with the local school board members and their superintendents uh at Hibb.
School board members and their superintendents uh at Hibbing High School as well as um. Our legislators attended, so we had Senator uh Robert Farnsworth, Representative Igo. Representatives Scraba and I believe Representative Warwas was, thank you. Um. Um we as board members and superintendents were able to uh essentially. Let them know where our concerns fall with the current um school funding choices, mandates, uh legislation. Um things of that nature and where that all falls for all of our districts as far as um. All of our districts just essentially needing more funding and and how it affects each one of us personally. And they were very receptive. They let us know that they are encouraging. Um not just school board members and staff members and superintendents, but. Um our local community members as well to email them and let them know how important it is that our districts receive. Funding and appropriate funding to make sure that we can keep. Our career pathways open, to make sure that we can keep our early education and invest early is open. Um and that when um. The lawmakers come uh and have that on the this bill put together that they all have. Everybody's concerns about what that looks like and why all of these things need to be appropriately funded and. And make sure that each one of our needs are met um on an education level, public schools uh need to be funded appropriately. So. That was the one. Meeting that I really could. Give a little bit of a report on um from this past.
Thank you.
Working, yeah.
Dave?
Yeah, uh I appreciated uh Jayden the the report on the uh academic excellence awards and the notes that uh. Principal Hofstad that you put uh together for that. Uh it was an incredible awards evening recognizing tremendous success. Among our students. Uh again, uh very proud of what our students are able to accomplish. Attendant Policy Review Committee uh and Superintendent has reported on that uh already. Student of the Month Club is at the uh final uh final Friday uh of the month. And that's always a great recognition of some really special students that uh. That combine to make our schools uh a much better place to be. Uh and. Commendations to the high school for uh those recognitions. Uh endowment planning and the Boys and Girls Club meeting. And uh finally, we have an election. Coming up on uh April twenty ninth and we need to fill uh a senate seat. Uh for District Six. I encourage uh those from District Six to uh get out for the election on Tuesday the twenty ninth.
Dave?
All right, uh thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, the fifteenth, I attended the Rife Arts Council meeting. Uh we were able to see a preview of the season and all of the uh entertainment and the acts that will be coming through to the Rife this year. It's a little bit less than previous years, but I think it's a it's a known um. Benefit to have a few less. Uh and then at least some uh spots open for ad hoc opportunities to come through the area. Um it's a great lineup. Looking forward to that. Uh one concern that was shared that I um shared that I would share here. Uh is that the Rife is seeing less attendance at school events at the Rife from our district. Uh and so I just wanted to um share that, that that's a concern that's out there. There is busing monies available. Um for our buses to get the kids there, even though it's a short distance. Um but just curious about why that might be. Now looking for an answer right now, but. So that I would uh bring that up here. It's a great opportunity for our kids. Um I know there's a lot of different. Things uh competing for interests in our schools. Um but this is a question that was uh asked and so curious about what that would be. Um last Wednesday, I also attended the Academic Achievement Awards. Kudos to um Principal Hofstad and Heidi Clermont. That program is um. Uh heartwarming, I think, is the best way to say it. It's so cool to see, one, the Rife Center filled to capacity. You just don't see that very often and standing in remote and literally watching these kids be celebrated for their achievements is pretty incredible. And then along the lines of what Mr. Marty was saying, I actually talked to candidate Heinzman this morning. Um she's one of the candidates for Senate District Six and I brought her up to speed on our mascot situation. She was not aware of it. Um. I brought her up to speed on what the issue was, the history of it, where we're at, where we stand. Um I'm reaching out to candidate. Uh forgive me if I say it, Slippy?
Slappy.
Slappy um tomorrow to do the same and just share that. I think it's important, knowing that we may not have a. Repetray a senator from our local area. So it's important to just make sure that they, whoever wins, um is aware of our um situations here, both with our district and our our mascot issue.
Mm hmm.
So I have.
Top. Um, as Ashley had mentioned, uh I was able to go to the the Rams meeting there. Uh. It was it was really good again that Rams hosted that. Um. I think it allowed us to have a little more focused conversation. Uh I felt it was a little more effective. At least for me than when we went down to the cities per se. Um. Little more one-on-one time with them after uh which was nice. Um. And and I found it interesting um when they brought up the fact uh getting those emails out. So I think as a group will will make a real good effort at. At hitting that target date. They gave us some dates to hit there and I think it'll be important for us to. To make sure they're seeing that inbox line up there. Um I had a little bit of a. Scheduling mish mishap on the Big Fork Advisory Group, but uh we were talking a little bit about it there and unfortunately I would I missed that uh but. Now got it on my calendar. It's amazing how dependent I become on my phone there. So with that, uh that's all I have.
So I'll, I I can kind of pitch in on that. Um I attended the Big Fork Advisory last Tuesday. Uh that committee's been working on setting. Uh goals for the school. Uh primary focus has been on their music program and they've done a lot of really good work. Uh putting together a a strong growing music program in Big Fork and. Uh a lot of the discussion Tuesday was around. Setting some some goals and some timelines to have certain parts of that uh plan implemented. Uh with that, uh we'll go to you Superintendent Gross.
Thank you. I, one of the practical things that came out of that group and you know, I I thought I was just kind of grateful for um. When in the course of time or different changes of staff, the. The building became in need of some music chairs and music chairs are specific, right? Um. It's not like you go buy the folding chairs at Walmart and ask kids to sing or play instruments in them, right? So um through the course of the discussion, one of the community member's sister. Was a former music teacher i- in Big Fork, Andy River, and now teaches uh down in Southern Minnesota. And they had gone through a recent building project where their chairs all got swapped out. And so we were able to acquire. A whole pile of these chairs for like kind of pennies on the dollar uh and completely outfit. That music uh room now with winger chairs uh which are what, you know, what you want. And uh so. You know, they're being creative too. Uh so I appreciated that and you know, that community person went down there and picked them all up for us. So I mean, um. I I just, those are the kind of cool things that can happen when you. Work together and collaborate. Uh a couple of nuts and bolts things. Um. Blackboard, who we've used for our website for many years, was purchased by Final Site in twenty twenty two. In that tech industry, it's, you know, buy and sell and all that stuff. Um and at at that time, we were notified that we were going to have to migrate to the new platform at some point and. Um Julie and I remember talking about it going, this is just not the right time to do this. Um so we put it off and put it off as long as we possibly could. Um so we delayed that, we delayed that implementation for three years, but we will be updating that site this summer, converting over to the new Final Site platform. Uh it's it's kind of a good opportunity to sort of. Do some spring cleaning on the website too, because things get added to websites rather than taken down more. And so I think that's good. I think in the end it'll be good. It'll look updated and fresh. Um just but uh. Think that'll be good. Um uh Jaden mentioned scholarship night on the seventh at Grand Rapids High School. It's also the same night as uh the senior banquet in Big Fork. And so uh if you um. If you're able to head up there, I know um like Dave, I have senior and so I'll be sticking around town. Um but uh if you're able to get up there, that'd be good. I had some follow-ups from our discussion on uh other post-employment benefits last week and I just wanted to make sure the right message. Is getting out there that the reasons we are talking about that. Issue is first to determine the best way to pay these benefits moving forward. And to make sure we're paying them in the most efficient and economical way possible. We didn't mention or talk about for a second uh the idea of eliminating benefits, but. You know, health benefits are are really uh something people pay close attention to and for a good reason. So I just wanted to make sure that people know. Uh that that wasn't part of the conversation. We're clear in our understanding of our obligations and. Um it did to provide those benefits. So just wanted to make sure that was clear. Uh I had the opportunity to visit the tech crawl that was hosted down the hallway. Uh last week or two weeks ago. And so that was an opportunity for. Students from areas, school districts, including ours, to come visit the um the tech hub. And so there were presentations on uh drones, on coding, on. GIS. I'll probably get some of these wrong and say more than it, but uh it was really great from all the school districts. And so they were exploring career opportunities. Um our partners at uh Smart North helped with putting that together. Josiah did a good job of hosting. And so I think it was a really, really good event. Uh had the opportunity to talk about. Public school funding with Jeremy Olson, the uh superintendent from Bemidji on Lakeland Public News uh last week. I don't think we can talk about it enough. It's complicated and confusing and uh so I think that's important. And that should air here in the next couple of weeks. Finally, tomorrow night, the IASK Board of Directors is going to be meeting to to be talking about the future. Uh IASK has undergone a lot of changes and you heard Jackie and Darla talk tonight about, you know, I'd say what for years was the. Um. I don't know, the the pinnacle program in IASK maybe was Invest Early. It had national attention when it was at its pinnacle. And uh a lot has changed with that program and is needed to change and and those two. Have done a really good job leading through some really, really hard time. Um. But every once in a while, it's important that IASK gets together to talk about what priorities look like, what partnership looks like. What collabor- true collaboration actually looks like um to gauge commitment and those kinds of things. So. There'll be some of those discussions tomorrow night at that meeting and um I'm looking forward to that. It's uh. IASK has been around since about two thousand and six, so we're going on how many ever years that is. And um when you have. Boards that naturally turn over, superintendents that turn over a great deal, maintaining that. Institutional momentum maybe is challenging. And um so. It's been, I think, a an amazing group of districts doing a lot of good. But uh figuring out what we want to put our shoulders behind is going to be really, really important. Um. I think that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh reminder, upcoming school board committee and meeting dates are posted on each agenda. School board meeting agendas can be found on the district website and at the designated posting site. At the District Three Eighteen Educational Services Center. Is there any other business to come before the board? Julie, has anyone signed up for public input?
No, they haven't.
This time meeting's adjourned.